I'll mute myself. Hello, Larry.
Hello, how are you, Yolanda?
Doing great.
Yeah, don't see Chris and Robin yet, but we'll just give him Sean, we'll give him another minute.
Councilor Malanga is in here.
Okay.
But Councilor Sterns has not arrived yet.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Robin. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Okay, Council, let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone, and this is our City Council Study Session for March 29th, 2021. And we will call the meeting to order. Per Governor Isley's Emergency Proclamation 20-05 and 20-28, and stay safe, stay healthy, the City of Auburn is holding public meetings virtually at this time. City of Auburn Resolution Number 5581 designates the City of Auburn meeting locations for our regular, special, and study session meetings of the City Council, and of the committees, boards, and commissions as virtual locations. And Sean, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCortney.
Here.
Councilmember Bragg.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Jay Raj.
Here.
Councilor Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Stern. Councilmember Stern. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Okay, hopefully Councilmember Sterns will join us in a minute or two. All right, let's move into our agenda items for this evening, Council. We have one item on the agenda this evening, and it's ordinance number 6817. And Council, we are going to hold all questions and comments until after staff presentations this evening. So, Spex, yeah, please appreciate your cooperation with that, and we'll take questions and comments after the staff has finished with the presentations. With that, I will turn this over to Director Tate.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, Mayor. Well, it's been about six or seven months since we had some previous conversations about homelessness and camping on city properties. And this evening, we're back before Council to talk about that some more. And I do want to indicate that I'll be walking through a presentation here. It's probably about a 30-minute presentation. I will call on a couple of my colleagues to help with a few parts of that presentation. And I did want to indicate upfront that as we get into Q and A, we do have representatives from all the city departments to be able to answer questions about the proposed ordinance and issues and new information that we'll provide this evening. So you may be asking yourself, why are we talking about this six months after Council had adopted an ordinance? And I wanted to just call out a few of the reasons that we're back before City Council this evening. One is just to talk about the experience that we've had over the last six months. Also to talk a little bit about some growing concern over impacts to the environment, some costs associated with cleaning up encampments, also the timing of launching the city's community court, as well as feedback from the Police Advisory Committee. So we're going to touch on each of those areas a little bit this evening. And one of the things that I wanted to start with is really kind of a singular situation at the Auburn Environmental Park. And I think we'll kind of zoom out from there and talk about some of the kind of the bigger issues or more macro level type of issues. So first of all, just so everybody has sort of a good geographic context, the Auburn Environmental Park is located along both sides of the 167 corridor and extends on the south end from Main Street up to on the north end, 15th Street Northwest. And then on the north side of 15th Street, there's additional property that the city owns. And it's not technically part of the environmental park, but it's connected hydrologically and, you know, from an environmental perspective as well. So we've seen a growth in encampments within the Auburn Environmental Park. So we're going to talk a little bit about that and show a few photos and walk through what some of the impacts are. And I will bring up a slideshow presentation here in about 30 seconds to kick that off. I do want to say that the Auburn Environmental Park is something that the city has spent a lot of money on. Acquisition of the property has cost a lot of money. Our protection efforts cost a lot of money, and those include mitigation and enhancement that we, along with our partner agencies, have designed and implemented to try to restore the Auburn Environmental Park. Most of that area has historically been farmed, or it has been impacted and isolated because of historic development, a lot of which was development of highways and roads. So the Auburn Environmental Park in that area is not what it used to be or not what it was in its native condition. And the environmental park and the extension of the park north of 15th Street is also where Mill Creek runs through. So I'm going to share my screen real quick, and I want to make sure that I'm sharing the right screen. And if I could get maybe a thumbs up from Deputy Mayor, if you can see a slideshow. Great. Now I'm going to put it into presentation mode. Let's see. Okay. So, first encampment location, which triggered some discussion internally about what to do with an encampment that we find and how to address any sort of environmental impacts that are occurring, is in this general location. So you can see to the left that it's an area that's between West Valley Highway and State Route 167. The image to the right shows sort of a static shot of an encampment in that area. And this whole area is a mix of wetlands, creek, little upland areas that are hummocks or little islands within the wetlands. And Mill Creek is a creek that has salmon in it. So it's one that we look at a little differently than other waterways in the city. So I wanted to just sort of highlight what it looks like to get into an encampment like this. So this is, these are pathways in, and some of these are really difficult to see because they're hundreds of yards into the environmental park off of West Valley Highway. And you can see sort of, you know, what that path looks like. I'll do a little shout out to Councilmember Trout Manuel. You're in that far-left photo. It's hard to see you, but you're navigating those pallets to get back to the encampments that, at least this encampment. Pallets are placed there so that people can, you know, move through this area without getting wet and muddy because they are wetland areas. And then once you get back into these areas, this particular encampment, just a few photos of what that looks like. There's a lot of debris in these areas. The, you know, it's a mix of things. So you find lots of used hypodermic needles. You find feces in urine, urine being in jugs that are placed in the creek or the wetlands. You find a lot of garbage, you find food waste, you find batteries, electronics, plastic, lots of stuff that's back in these areas. And, you know, this sort of expands out into one image of what a portion of that encampment looks like. Environmental degradation is a concern of ours in this area, and we have actually not only a desire to clean and improve the conditions back there from an environmental perspective, but we actually have regulatory obligation to make sure that these areas are clean. The pictures there just are trying to illustrate that there's a lot of debris within the wet areas. And when debris is within the wet areas, it is navigating into channels, other portions of the wetland, and also infiltrates, you know, into the soil and ultimately makes its way into, you know, aquifers that are, takes a long time, but it eventually infiltrates its way into that, those locations. This center picture that has kind of a colorful little pack there. Reason I'm showing that, and I don't want to take this out of context because all the other pictures are around Mill Creek, but that picture was taken by members of the Puyallup Tribe. And this really pertains to a White River issue, which is finding used needles in fish traps downstream. So one of the things that the Puyallup Tribe has done is they're trying to go upstream of the White River and identify areas and opportunities where we can reduce that kind of experience for them. And then these two areas are back to the Mill Creek area and another portion of the encampment. And, you know, we do find a lot of debris within the waterways out there. Some additional photos, just for context. You know, we have identified in the last six months 43 encampments that are similar to this. Some have people in them, some don't. So some get vacated. And sometimes it's the environment that actually forces people or encourages people to vacate. But you can see that within the 41 of the 43 encampments, you know, used needles are a, something that we see commonly. Also want to point out that there are encampments in Kent. We'll talk about this in a little while, but there are children living in some of the encampments at times. So, you know, that's another concern of ours as we think about how to manage all of these competing and concerning areas from the environment to the people. So when we, when we looked at that first encampment in the environmental park, we did contact a hauler because that park, by the time we had contacted a junk hauler, had been vacated. And the cost at that time that they provided to clean up that encampment was $25,000, and that's the haul cost. That price has since gone up. And part of the problem is that there's a timing issue. Right now is the worst time of the year that you could go in and clean an encampment like that. And that's because it's one of the most sensitive times for the environment. You can't bring trucks back there. You can't, you have to haul everything out by hand. And that has to be done essentially by wheelbarrow or by hand. And our concern is that, you know, as you clean encampments, it is likely that there will be people that return to that location or they've set up in a different location. So we are going to be back continuously cleaning encampments. Some factors to consider, because I think people ask this question a lot, like, well, why can't you just fence these areas? Well, there is fencing that exists in portions of these areas, but fencing is easy to break through, and we continue to repair it. Not to mention that fencing is not the appropriate approach for the environment because it inhibits the navigation of the wildlife that are relied upon these areas. A little bit of a sort of geographic context. So we're kind of now zooming out of just one encampment. And I mentioned before that we've identified 43 encampments that we're aware of. It doesn't mean that this is all of them. But in the North Auburn area, you'll see maps here that show the 28 encampments that we're aware of, and 25 of those are within environmentally sensitive critical areas. We can move to South Auburn, and we have 15 encampments that we've identified, nine of which are in environmentally sensitive critical areas.
Jeff and Deputy Mayor, we're having some technical issues here in council chambers. Could I ask that we take a 15-minute recess? And my apologies for this. But if we could, Deputy Mayor, if you wouldn't mind calling a 15-minute recess.
Yes, Mayor, will do. So, Council, at this time, we will recess the meeting for 15 minutes, and we will turn, return at 6:00 PM. We are recessed.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I just made some homemade cabbage soup, Claude. It is delicious.
Oh, wonderful. That sounds good.
Oh, is it? Hmm, as for dinner.
All right. Hi, Chris.
Hi, there. Now, I have like a webcam and it just clicks.
I see that, yeah.
So, yeah, but it, it, it's, it's not the most stable thing. Sometimes I'll have it set up and then eventually it'll
It'll start grouping down, yeah.
Or go higher and higher. I had a, I had a hard time logging in today.
Did you really?
Yeah, every time I clicked on the Zoom link, I got taken to a Zoom thing that said the meeting has expired.
Oh, I, yeah, we get those messages once in a while, so.
Yeah, and then just fortunately I have a blue email came in from Sean.
Yeah.
A new link.
All right, we'll just wait for the mayor to get back out here and then we'll uh, go ahead and resume. We're still having technical issues, council.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Yes, Your Honor.
My apologies uh, for the delay. The
No problem.
The technical difficulties that we are having here are not going to allow us to proceed with the meeting this evening. Our plan is to hold a special steady session at five-thirty next Monday, April fifth, prior to the seven P, seven thirty, seven P M, sorry, seven P M council meeting.
Okay. So at this time, council, uh, due to our situation with the, with technology, we're going to adjourn the meeting and we will reconvene this meeting uh, Monday, April fifth at five-thirty P M. So I'm sorry for the delay, everybody, but we'll see you next Monday. And at this time, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.